Alright, so we've got recording in progress. I have got seven oh five Eastern time, so we will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you, everybody, for making time on your Wednesday this time for the for our special meeting. Purpose of today's meeting is twofold. First and foremost, we want to take a look at the proposed budget that Dominique has put together for fiscal year 2025, 2026. As a reminder, we like to vote on, vote on and get a, get a budget approved before the start of the new fiscal year for the PTA, which starts on July first of the year to ensure that the PTA is able to make expenditures during the summer months when we're makes it a little bit harder for everybody to meet and have general votes for the PTA. So we like to make sure that the budget can be approved beforehand. And then the second part on today's agenda is voting in presenting, I mean, presenting and voting in next year's executive board for the PTA. So exciting times. Get my screen up and running. We will start with the budget first and foremost. Dominique, do you want to go through this or do you want me to talk through it? Either way works for me. I will take the silence as I will go through it. Alright, so I'm actually going to show this in Excel window because it's going to be a lot easier. Again, as with everything, if anybody wants a, wants a copy of the budget, please feel free to email Dominique or myself and we will get you a copy of the budget. I'm going to pull it up here in Excel because it's going to make my life easier to highlight some things. You will notice some couple things as we go through this, you will see some blank line items. In most cases, these are accounts that have been our light arms that have been in the budget in years past. Our accounting software QuickBooks just lumps it in there, even if we don't have anything there when we're, when we're building the budget. So there it's going to be some line items that I skip. And in some instances where you see things like athletics concession sales, those are being, those don't have a value because we don't have a particular, a particular income or particular dollar amount set for what that's going to bring in, just gives a little bit more flexibility.
Hey Danny, I'm back. I'm sorry. I had to move my car out of the way so David could go to work.
Oh, that was nice of you. So yeah, I was just running through some of the explanations as to why we see some blanks on here. But if you want to, you want to take it from here and walk through the proposed budget and we will open it up for questions as we go.
Absolutely. I'm going to open the door real quick because my dogs are ringing the bell in the background. Okay, thank you for your patience. Alright, so the beginning we get to what is our income, what we think we're going to have now. This carryover is pretty hefty in comparison to what we had carryover from last year. That is because of the Ham Jam's money that's rolling over. We take that out and then we take out the money that Fund Run raised for Sunshades. We're actually much more on track with previous years. Let's see, I'm so sorry. Give me just a moment to yell at my kids. Thank you. I'm sorry.
All good.
We kept our invest goal the same this year as it was for last year. We did meet and slightly exceed last year's goal of forty thousand with changes that we're anticipating just in our general
donor base.
Economic climate. We are going to try our best to keep that the same, but I don't think we're, we should really aim for more. Ham Jams is always a wild card, so that's, you know, we don't want to count on anything that's not coming in. And then some of these other lines are remnants from PTA's years past. The Spain Scholarship Fund, for example, things like that.
So do you, do you want to go line by line, Dominique?
Um, no, I don't think we have to go. Do we need to go line by line? Let's see. Collinswood Spiritites, that's like when we do the checkers games, things like that, we get a kickback from them. Family Dance, we don't really pull money off of that, that really feeds into anything besides just covering the costs of the event. Fall and Spring Book Fair have been very consistent over the years. We pretty much spend five thousand dollars and then we make back that same five thousand dollars each time, just about. Usually fall does a little bit better, but I think this year spring did, which was a little bit of a surprise. Invest again is the same as last year. Membership dues, we usually, I think we're sitting around like eight hundred or something like that for income that comes in. Spiritware always does really well. I kind of was tempted to think, well, we maybe will might make me more, but I don't want to count chickens before they hatch. And then
Thank you.
And then after that, we pretty much getting, we start moving into what everything is going to end up costing us. We think we'll probably pull in one hundred and forty five thousand, seven hundred dollars. That includes the carryover, which includes, of course, Ham Jams and Sunshades, which will eventually kind of go and do their thing.
Want to, want to pause there real quick. Any questions from the group regarding any of the income line items? Alrighty, forward and onward.
Accounting expense, that's just filing our taxes. QuickBooks is how we keep track of everything and that's just their subscription fee. Copies and stamps, a lot of that goes with treasury stuff for when I need to mail checks to people, but also when we do things for, with ICI and we get stuff that's printed, it's also a little bit for when we have occasional like expenses for different things like supplies for helping hands, staplers, new staplers, pencil sharpeners, so we don't have to do it by hand, things like that. Insurance.
No, those are workroom expenses.
Well, do we have workroom expenses this year? I don't know.
Yeah, we do.
And then insurance is a little bit less than four hundred, but we just kind of round up. Thankfully, we didn't have any legal expenses. Website hosting, pretty self-explanatory, cost of spiritware, self-explanatory. Curriculum usually covers a bunch of stuff at the beginning of the school year. Anything from agendas to subscriptions for things like the the movie licensing for educate, you know, so they can do documentaries and they can have basically teach flicks, that sort of stuff, classes for our middle school. Cultural events and activities we kept, but DEI is a line that we are letting sleep for this next year. And then discretionary classroom expenses, that's two hundred dollars for every teacher. So sorry, my son is burping in the background. About two hundred dollars for every teacher to use towards setting up their classroom, buy materials for their students, things like that.
Siri, turn on my Bluetooth.
The Active Family Event, that was our Sky Zone event the last two years. We usually try to cover, is it like a drink and a slice of pizza or something like that?
Icy.
Ices.
Ices, those bright red ices.
Oh, that's fun. I, we have missed those both years, so. I don't know for sure on that one. Then there's Fall Fest, which they're hoping to make even bigger and better next year. And, and we can talk about that when the time comes, but right now we're going to keep the budget the same for that and for the family dance. Those two lines haven't changed from this last year. Taste of Collinswood, they spent just under a thousand dollars this last year, so we kept that the same as well. Field trip line to help with things like any grades field trip, we, what we try to do is have five hundred dollars for each grade. What usually ends up happening is that that money helps students who need assistance going to DC, Atlanta, like the, the big, big trips.
So Dominique, I'm going to pause you real quick. There's a question in the chat from Crystal about what is the Invest Campaign? So the Invest, Invest Campaign, that is our annual big fundraiser. It's usually done September, beginning of the year. That is where we raise the majority of our money for all things related to the PTA. So that's when you'll usually see us with lots of, lots of thermometers out there out in the, in the carpool line showcasing, showcasing how much money we have spent. But that is where again, the biggest thing is that's what is the bulk of our operating income comes from for the PTA. Yes, when you get solicited at the carpool and I always like to tell people, think about you, when you're considering your invested, your invest donation, remember that's one less thing that you have to peddle to friends, neighbors or on Facebook about, you know, hey, buy this wrapping paper, buy these baked goods, buy this thing. So that's, that is our big annual fundraiser.
You said it couldn't fit.
And then we have a question from, or actually any other questions regarding the Invest Campaign? Cool deal. Now there's another question from Maya regarding the DEI line item and what has been spent there on the past, where those funds being moved for next year? Has someone explicitly said that we cannot spend on this next year? So I will tackle the latter part of that about why, essentially why we're moving away from the DEI line item. This is something that is coming through between, between the district and between Principal Maudin. You know, in light of some of the executive orders and recent political climate, wanting to make sure that when we do spend money for things related to diversity, equity, inclusion, this money is actually going to be rerouted to the, to the cultural events and activities. This does not mean we're going to do away with DEI in, DEI activities. This just means we're changing the name and reframing, reframing the line item. Again, just to make sure that we're, we're being cognizant and being in alignment with just current political climate. Yeah, rebranding, thank you.
Could ever see that.
And then
Yeah, and well, we used to, and we used to use it for like some of our Black History Month activities, Hispanic Heritage Month, so it, it, it's just being moved.
Correct. So we're not actually, we're not actually taking money away. We're just rebranding it because the, for comparison purposes, actually pulled this up real quick. The, for this year's budget, the diversity, equity, inclusion, you know, we had fifteen hundred budgeted and spent right at a thousand. You know, whereas the cultural events and activities, we had twenty five hundred. I'm reading this backwards, but we're just moving the money around so we can spend it differently.
This last year, we did not actually use a ton. Some of that DEI money ended up kind of getting pulled to help some of the athletes who couldn't afford certain like different odds and ends and to help them like as a team, just participate and everyone has that same kind of ground and there's no obstacles there. The in preview, in the last year before this one, there was a lot of DEI money going towards supporting kind of like the sprinkle on top of curriculum teaching with Women's History Month, Black History Month, AAPI Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, like any kind of, if they wanted to do something extra with their lesson and it was going to cost them a little bit of extra money for materials or they wanted to have like a little guests come into the building, that sort of thing. That's usually what it went towards. But this last year, it obviously took a pretty steep decline in, in usage. And so we're just kind of going to give it a little rebrand. Any other questions?
Alright, I think we are good to move forward. So we were last here at Field Trips.
Alright, so Field Trips, we went over that, Book Fair went over that. Invest expenses, that's just like when we do our posters and our flyers and things like that, just the cost of doing business and getting the word out. And then Ham Jams, this is that forty thousand dollars that they're carrying over from, from this year. How and what specifically is pretty much a really wide net? Ham Jams has covered things this year, like standing desks for teachers, a classroom set of keyboard, electric keyboard pianos for Miss Alkamo, air purifiers for the classrooms, fans for classrooms, Spanish language book sets, class sets of novels. So the kids, because I don't know, I don't know if they do it in older grades, but I know so far for us in third grade, I was asking Lena, you know, do you guys do books in Spanish, the way you guys do, you know, Charlotte's Web or Peter Pan? And she said, no, we don't, we don't do that. And this Ham Jams money is, is being spent, we spent eight thousand dollars so far on Spanish language novels, class sets for our kids so that they can really bump up that biliteracy component. And, and the money keeps going. We are, we are continuing to buy more things with Ham Jams. They'll, they'll be getting some classroom rugs for teachers, big ticket items that they are two hundred dollars doesn't cover.
And the one thing I will add here with the Ham Jams expenses, part of the reason it is rather vague is it allows us more flexibility in how we spend it. But just to make sure for full transparency, the items we are purchasing with Ham Jams expenses are coming directly from surveys and feedback that we've gotten from, from the teachers. So it's all done with their direct input and Principal Maudin's ultimate approval. But all of this, all of the items that Dominique listed off, these are things that the teachers have specifically asked for.
Then courtyard materials, that's those courtyards our kinder and first graders play in. It is slowly becoming one of the most exciting places to be. It used to be so boring and I'm so excited to see those soccer, what are they soccer?
Goals.
Almost said soccer pit and it's terrible. I know that was wrong. And the, I don't even know what the ball things are called. Sherry, if you want to help me out there because it sounds bad.
The Fun Hoops.
Fun Hoops.
Yeah.
Things like that. So this kind of is a continuing project for us to make it so that even though they don't get to access that big playground immediately, that they have fun and they have something to really, you know, liven up recess and give their brain something more to chew on than being stuck outside with absolutely nothing to do but run, which for some kids, you know, it works, but other ones, not so much. This athletics team support line is new this year. Our athletes are coming back swinging post COVID and this fifteen hundred is going to help them with uniforms, which funny enough are not all completely provided by the district. As well as like little incidentals and stuff like when the kids have an away game right after school and they basically have to stay at school and then wait for a minute, get on a bus, go to a game and then they're, you know, they're starving. They don't get to eat dinner until eight o'clock and nine o'clock at night. So this, you know, the snacks and stuff to keep them fed and fueled and things like that. Then we've got four thousand dollars, that's to cover two middle school dances. Then we have five hundred for graduations. That doesn't cover just eighth grade, but the fifth grade too. I know it's under the middle school umbrella, but it does also cover that.
It's because they're moving into middle school.
Oh, I guess so. In my brain, it's still elementary, but you, that's right. And then they have a discretionary fund. So when they want to do quarterly parties, end of quarter parties or casa parties or anything extra that they need, like, didn't we buy pigs one year? For dissection, I think we bought pigs for science when the science budget was
Yes.
That's right.
Yeah. That, that's where that's going. And then we have a discretionary account for PTA. That's just gives us more flexibility if another line needs a little support. Gifts and recognition, that's like if someone's retiring or somebody had a baby or somebody, I don't know, some, usually it's retirement gifts. PTA events, that's there if we decide. I don't know how the next board will decide to do it or use it, but I, I put it in there and I thought it might be good to kind of have the option there if we wanted to do like an end of year celebration. Membership fees, that's just what we have to pay and see PTA for the members that we have. Would they get a cut? Correct. We do not have enough, I'm sorry, we have a question says no athletic booster club at middle school level, correct? And yes, that is currently the case that we do not have a booster club.
And there's a reason for that because we did look into it and there's a lot of legalities in starting one up. It would, it would take a, several parents willing to put in several hours of work and you have to build a, like bylaws, you have to have a board, it turns into a whole big thing. So we have a rebranded name of a booster club. And this year it was just the PTA Athletic Fund and mainly led by Kristen Lasperla and some of the other middle school parents that would help her out at basketball games and such when she was slinging some pizza slices and some food and, and we can continue doing that too. But an official booster club is a whole nother pathway.
Somebody's totally welcome to do it, but uh, yeah, this was just the way we could get it done a little bit faster.
It's a good question. That was a good question.
It is. I, I don't have it in needed to do it, but if somebody's got the energy, you're welcome. Sales tax to be reimbursed, that's just if, if, in the event we have a vendor who gives us an invoice directly to the PTA and for whatever reason, they can't or won't take the tax off as a nonprofit, we get that money back when we file our taxes.
This is where it is, right?
Indoor and outdoor beautification, we have decreased their budgets this next year with knowing that we've gotten a lot done. We will get a lot more done this summer when children are out of the building on the inside. But outdoor beautification has done amazing things. I know they have more big plans ahead. But for what we think we can do with Invest, this is what we think, this is where we think we're going to be. Special class support, that all goes, we have kind of like a general catch of five hundred dollars, but then we have kind of some sub lines there for art and band and health, I don't know why health room is in there because it's not really class, but it was just, it's how it was structured when I inherited it, probably how it's been since before Coachera had it. So that's just extra money for those classrooms that have more expensive materials. Or, you know, when Miss Alkamo does the musicals or band has concert, it just helps out with stuff like that. We've got a new teacher, welcome. Principal discretionary professional development, staff appreciation, staff appreciation week. Engagement is something that's back again. It wasn't on last year's, it was on the year before. But they really loved it and they're, they were really excited to have it. So we added that one back. And then we always host a welcome back breakfast for the entire staff right at the beginning of the school year. And then this sunshades is twelve thousand dollars that's carrying over pretty much from what the Fund Run raised. And that puts us right, right at where we want to be pretty much.
Thanks, Dominique. So any, want to open it up for questions, comments, concerns, discussions? We have one question from Naomi in the chat. Where do we pull teacher birthday gift cards and retirement gifts from?
So the teacher birthday ones come from staff appreciation, retirement comes from gifts and recognition. Because we usually have a lot more teachers with birthdays in a year than we do teachers retiring. It sounded better in my brain, I realized.
I was, I followed you.
I was just going to say that to note, the Fund Run raised a lot more money than that, but we already, Dominique sent in the first check for the first half of what was owed. So that money is there for the second half that will need to be paid. So that, those sunshades are going in guys this summer.
I'm being, being, that's very exciting. Thank you for that.
Super exciting. So again, this is going back to what I was mentioning earlier, a big part of why we want to review and approve a budget now is so that we can get those sunshades installed over the summer.
Alright, someone in the chat said, can we not use some money in the budget to pay for proctors?
The answer is, I wish, I really wish we have looked into this for hiring substitutes, for helping subsidize additional teachers, you name it. It will leave it at the bureaucracy of CMS. We are not allowed to directly pay staff. There is a mess, Pamela commented, maybe we could tap ERG groups from big corporations in the area to be proctor volunteers. That's something, definitely something that we can follow up on. You know, that's, that'd be great because it'd be outside of the budget and something that, or something to me that's not, has to be paid for outside of the budget. I know Ross through Bank of America has had several volunteers come in, especially at a Fall Festival time that were huge help. So you plug for anybody who has a corporate volunteer programs at their offices or places of business.
Or if anyone has friends or themselves work for those corporations that will pay you for volunteer hours, that's how I got one of my neighbors to come help. So.
Any other questions or discussions or items related to the budget as proposed?
No, but I was going to say for me, this has been the most successful proctor swath. Hopefully we didn't scare away everybody, but this has been quite the successful year. So thank you, everybody who has helped, who's got the word out, all the things.
Alright, everybody. Well, hearing no further discussion, I would like to make a motion that the budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026 be approved as written. Do I have a second?
My second.
And all those in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? The motion passes, the budget is approved. Congratulations, Dominique. We are appreciate all your hard work and we are ready to spend some money for those sunshades specifically.
Oh yeah, Sherry was very happy to see that first check get cut.
Alright, everybody. Now we will move over to what everybody is especially here for today. The officer election and the executive board election for 2025, 2026. We are first going to present the slate of nominees. I have this on screen. This is a pretty, or not a pretty, this is a very scripted process as you can see here on screen. So you'll get to hear me repeat myself quite a bit. But first and foremost, I would like to start with the Office of the Treasurer. Ms. Lisa Pugh has been nominated for the treasurer position.
Hey Danny, I'm sorry to steal your thunder, but does the nominating chair do this or do, does the president do this?
Based on the instructions I have, it says the president reads this slate of candidates, opens the floor for nomination for each office. And per section six point two of the bylaws, I did, I did read through them.
I, for some reason I thought Naomi did it last year, but okay, sorry.
I think she, I think she did and I read through for, I read through for, for clarity this year. I think she, I think she did, and I read through for, I read through for uh, for clarity this year.
I was, okay, sorry about that.
No, no, I, any opportunity to make sure that we're doing things appropriately, I always welcome. I will never look never look ugly at anybody who questions to make sure that we're doing the right things, right? Um, so are there any further nominations from the floor for the Office of the Treasurer position? Hearing none, nominations for the Office of Treasurer are closed. All those in favor of Lisa Pugh for the Office of Treasurer, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it, and Lisa Pugh is elected for the Office of Treasurer for next year. Congratulations, Lisa.
Congrats, Lisa.
Next up, we have Ms. Lori Hoffer, who couldn't make it tonight. Um, but Ms. Lori Hoffer has been nominated for the Office of Secretary. Are there any further nominations for the Office of Secretary? Alright, hearing none, nominations for the Office of Secretary are closed. All those in favor of Lori Hoffer for the Office of Secretary, please say aye. And any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it, and Lori Hoffer is reelected for the position of Secretary. Congratulations to Lori. Sherry, make sure you text her.
I am right now.
Next up, Jasmine Aguilar has been nominated for the position of Vice President Middle School. Are there any further nominations for the Office of Vice, PCA Vice President Middle School? Hearing none, nominations for the Office of Vice President Middle School are closed. All those in favor of Jasmine Aguilar for the Office of Vice President Middle School, please say aye. All opposed, please say no. The ayes have it, and Jasmine Aguilar has been reelected for the position of Vice President Middle School. Congrats, Jasmine. Next up, Ms. Kristen Lasprilla has been nominated for the position of Vice President of Elementary School. Are there any further nominations for the Office of Vice President Elementary School? Hearing none, nominations for the Office of Vice President Elementary School are closed. All those in favor of Kristen Lasprilla for the Office of Vice President Elementary School, please say aye. And any opposed, please say no. The ayes have it, and Ms. Kristen Lasprilla is elected for the position Vice President Elementary School. Congrats, Kristen.
She had to hop off, but I just sent her a text message too.
Thank you very mucho. And last but certainly not least, Ms. Sherry Bissel has been nominated for the position of PTA President. Are there further nominations for the Office of PTA President? Hearing none, nominations for the Office of President are closed. All those in favor of Sherry Bissel for the Office for PTA President, please say aye. And all opposed, please say no. The ayes have it, and Ms. Sherry Bissel is elected for the position of PTA President for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. So thank you, everybody, for for voting and participating in the process. Huge shout out to to Bailey for heading the, and uh, for heading the nomination committee and for Naomi for help, her help with the process in in gathering the slate of officers and making sure that we had, we had people to vote for. Uh, I know that's a, sometimes can feel like a thankless job, so thank you very much for your work there. And congratulations to everybody who, to Lisa and to Lori and Jasmine and Kristen and Sherry for being elected into their new positions. Excited to see where this board can can uh, can take, continue to take the PTA for Collinswood Language Academy. That's it for the agenda. Any questions, comments, concerns, or items to add to the agenda?
Thank you, Danny, we're, you've been an awesome president day this last couple of years.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
I was gonna say the same, thank you. Um, my son recognized you, thinks you're part of the staff, so thank you for all you've done, and um, I hope you'll still stick around and help us out.
Well, you know, the, I I've promised Sherry at least seventeen times today that uh, that I will not be going anywhere and I'll still be around. Um, I will not have an official official executive board position next year, but I will still be around in some way, shape or form.
That's what they call it.
You know, that's, that'll be for Sherry to decide. You know
Yes.
But he's gonna be there for the Papa's on patrol.
Of course. Wouldn't miss that. Um, the new, eh, just as a quick reminder, the the official cap, or the official fiscal year for the PTA ends on June thirtieth. So technically, I've still got a couple of weeks as the uh, as the leader of this show. Um, but I wanted to take this opportunity to express my thanks to everybody here on the call, the people that make time to join the PTA meetings, to be involved. Sometimes, sometimes people like to be involved silently, sometimes people like to be involved very publicly. Sometimes, and anywhere in between, um, you, the the things that I do and have done as president is you know, the 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 face, uh, the official face of the PTA, none of that would be possible without everybody. Uh, and I recognize that and wanna make sure I call it out, especially big shout out to Sherry. You see, everybody knows that she carries quite, she is the glue. She is the glue, and I am very proud of, pretty, very proud to know that she is going to continue to lead this group, and I know she is gonna do awesome things.
Thank you, Danny.
Well, everybody, it is seven forty-one, and I guess this will be my last official meeting that I will, that I will lead. We'll uh, move that we conclude this special meeting. Do I have a second?
My second.
Alright, y'all. Let's go ahead and call it seven forty-two. Everybody have a wonderful rest of the day, wonderful rest of the week. Uh, we'll see you around.
Bye, y'all.
Good night.
Happy summer.
Woo-hoo, we made it.